Good evening, folks in the morning. We have a West Orange Board of Education meeting for July 16, 2018, right here at West Orange High School. Mr. Calavano, roll call, please.
Mr. Alper?
Here.
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Here.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Calavano, before we start, I would like to observe a moment of silence for one of our teachers, Susan Zakaro, who passed away recently, to keep her in our thoughts and our prayers. If we can have a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. Mr. Calavano?
Notice of meeting, please take notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner, that a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 9, 2018. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and a Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. I need a motion for consideration of the closing of public meeting minutes from June 18, 2018.
Make a motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Calavano. I hope there's some technical difficulties to be worked out. Mr. Rutske, Superintendent Report.
Thank you. All right, so we have two pieces to the HIB tonight. We have what's required by state law, which is the January through June portion of how many HIB cases were confirmed. Then we have the overall year of how many cases were confirmed. And then we have the normal meeting where we have the HIB from the meeting before. And our last meeting, we were not done with school yet, and there were a couple cases that still needed to be wrapped up before the school year is over. So what we'll do is the 1718 HIB law requirements. And I gave you a document for the public, it's out with the other documents, if you'd like to look at it. If the Board did not bring their copy, I have an extra copy for you. So I'm just going to go through the two components that are required for the HIB law. And one is from, again, July through December and then January through June. If you look at the top document, we're looking at the right side where it says January through June, number of incidences initiated. You see Gregory is 14, the number completed within 10 days, and then the incidents found HIB. All right, so when you go and look at the bottom, you'll notice that there's 86 incidents that were initiated, 82 that were completed, and then the 18 that were found to be HIB. Now, you'll notice that there's four that were not completed within 10 days. By law, they're allowed to inform individuals that, for reasons that we may not know of, they can be extended. Maybe somebody's on vacation and they need to be investigated, they need to have a conference with somebody, but they're not within the 10 days. That's permissible as long as the individuals involved are made aware that it's not going to be within the 10 days. And then they document that, why that took place. If you flip and look at the other page, we have the three years where we're looking at 1516, 1617, and 1718. And again, you see on the 1718 to left column, there's 123 reported and 33 confirmed HIB. Last year, 1617, we had 101 reported with 39 confirmed, and the year before, 117 reported with 38. So we're down a little bit this year, six in particular, but the number of actual reported that needed to be investigated is up from last year and up just a little bit from three years ago. So with that, just wanted to see if there's any questions from the Board on the January through June and the overall year 1718.
Okay. I'm curious about the zero from Edison.
Yep. It's just the way it works out, and there just wasn't any. So obviously, there's a lot of good things going on there, a lot of things in place that didn't seem to warrant an HIB investigation.
Okay.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes. Mr. Rutske, for the first item, I believe it's Gregory School, the January to June section, there are three that were not completed within 10 days. And then, in the middle of the chart, St. Cloud, there were two not completed within 10 days. So that's five not completed, even though the total is at the bottom, say, 86 and 82.
Yes, thank you.
It should be five and not four.
Thank you.
Good catch. Anything further, Mrs. Mordecai?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Just turning to the second page, the actual incidences in Gregory seems to be increasing. Any speculation to what's going on?
As far as Gregory? Well, you know, again, it fluctuates year by year, and it depends, could be a lot of factors, Mr. Schwartzbaum. Two years ago, you know, they were up higher, then they dropped down, then they went up. So I don't, you know, I don't think there's anything in particular that is happening. I just think that, you know, that's kind of, one week could be a rough week, or a month could be a rough week. I don't think there's any kind of pattern.
Mr. Robertson?
I see Liberty's had a dramatic decline in the incidents found to be HIB, from 20 down to five. Were there any thoughts as to what was done there?
Again, nothing in particular. There was, you know, some specific training that took place. We looked at the different kinds of HIB incidences, and maybe there was some training specific in Liberty, or some changes in how things were being done, but nothing that was specific. Mr. Robertson?
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Robertson? No, thank you. Mr. Rutske, can you, for the public who's not aware, talk a little bit, briefly, about the process on what happens when a suspect, a case, alleged case of HIB happens in a school, and then what's the process throughout?
Sure. It can be, anybody can report that they believe there is alleged HIB. It can be a staff member who sees something, it could be a parent, it could be another student, et cetera. And from that point, the principal has two days to go ahead and put things in process with the anti-bullying specialists working and doing the investigation. As I said earlier, they have 10 days to get it done, and from there, if there's a reason that has to go beyond the 10 days, it's permissible, but they just have to be notified for whatever the reason might be. At that point, then the information is put together, it is sent over into the form that we're going to look at next. The Board goes ahead and looks at those, has any questions, and then we approve them the following board meeting. From there, if a parent disagrees that it is HIB or is not HIB, they have the right to appeal. And then we set up a board hearing where the parent could come in and have that conversation. If they disagree with the Board's findings, the Board has three choices to either affirm, reject, or modify my final decision as far as the outcome. The parent, at that point, has a chance to appeal to the Commissioner. And then the Commissioner makes a ruling on whether they affirm, he or she affirms the Board's decision, or that they decide that something else should be done. Okay, this is the final report. As I mentioned earlier, the board meeting was before school was over, there were still some investigations happening, and they have to be reported at the next board meeting. So that's where we are now. You will notice that all of them turned out to be no's as far as HIB.
Okay.
Any questions from the Board?
Any questions from the Board? Seeing none, okay.
And lastly, we used to have to do something called the Evers Report. The Evers Report was the violence vandalism, et cetera, weapons charges. That has changed, and what'll happen now is it's very similar to how the HIB is done, where there are periods of time that we have to report to the Board. So they change it in the sense that anything that takes place from September through December, the submission has to be then April 30, and we have between January and some other dates after that to go ahead and bring it to you. So it's very much like the HIB now. That will be coming, if it was the same it would have been at today's meeting, it is not the same. So that'll be coming in the next couple months. Once we have all of the data collected, we have to submit it to the State, and we'll be bringing it to the Board to discuss the numbers and look specifically at all the incidences. So that'll be coming in the next couple months.
Okay.
Okay, so I have tonight.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, questions from the public on agenda items. If anyone has a question or a comment on agenda items, this is just agenda items only. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Mr. Calavano will work time.
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road. My question is on page 17, item 16. My understanding was that you were going to work with the town to have a consolidated and chaired service trash agreement, but yet, when I read this, it looks like you're working with Interstate Waste Service and the town used Roselle. Please clarify.
Thank you.
Barry Geltz, another 118 old Indian. I've got a question or recommendation, I guess it was leaves of absence or number six here, recommend the employment contract for John Calavano. Don't we have a alleged embezzlement investigation going on? The super has two attorneys, a criminal attorney and an[745.88][745.88](whistle) excuse me. A criminal attorney and an employment attorney, and right now, I don't think, without the results of this investigation with the alleged embezzlement, that we should be extending John Calavano for another year. Maybe we could give him a series of 30-day extensions until we find out what the outcome is, because he was complicit, he did have this information in 2016 and never once gave it to you guys. I can't believe you extended it.
Thank you, Mr. Geltz.
Michaela Bennett, 35, old Indian, road. Just have one question about the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report, since it's a complete report for the entire year. Mr. Rutske, how many of those cases did you investigate yourself personally, and how many of those cases involved staff or an employee of the Board of Ed harassing, intimidating, and bullying students?
Thank you.
Good evening, John Blanton. Three questions. One, I had printed out the agenda earlier, and on the agenda on page eight, this is the original agenda, there was a number five that's not there, that said recommend approval for the superintendent's completed merit goals, two, four, five, for 2017, 2018, as per the criteria approved by Board of Education and Executive County Superintendent on November 20 of 2017. The completed goals were reviewed and approved by Joseph, I don't know if it's Zanna or Zara, because my printer may have had a printing error, Executive County Superintendent. On the original agenda, on page 17, there was, under miscellaneous E, there was fiscal management, and there were a wide variety of different items under that as it relates to the Board and your goals, and that is not there on the agenda. I looked in the addendum, I couldn't find them. And then, as it relates to the HIB report to the superintendent under the high school, just wanted to know if there were any student athletes that were involved in any of the HIB incidents at the high school.
Thank you. Seeing none, we'll close that section of the agenda. Okay, Mr. Rutske, actually, let's start with John, starting with Mr. Kramer's question.
Sure.
The trash bid with the township. We only received two bids through their bid. Roselli was not one of the contractors. We had Interstate and we had Waste Management, so therefore, the person that the township uses did not want to also take on the Board of Ed. So they put out the bid for one vendor doing both, or individual vendors?
Okay, as far as the HIBs, no, I didn't do any of them. Staff involved on the HIB of students, I do not have that number, the number of staff that, HIB towards students, I did not have that number. As far as, Mr. Blanton, the HIB for student athletes, I can't talk about any of the students in particular, and I can't identify them as student athletes, so I can't go there. I can't say anything about them.
As far as to answer Mr. Blanton's question about the Board goals, the Board has decided to remove them and refine them and have them on for our next meeting. Mr. Robertson, want to handle the others?
In regard to the superintendent's merit goals, the superintendent made the decision to pull them from the agenda.
Next, I'll turn over to Ms. Mordecai for the reading of the policy.
May I have a motion, please, for first reading of the following board policy, use of physical restraint and seclusion, 5561.
I'll move.
Thank you. Second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. That's on for first reading, so we'll have discussion at second reading, and give the public an opportunity to reach out to us with comments and questions on restraint and seclusion.
Ms. Mordecai, if I can just add, that policy, every policy first reading is on the website
Yes.
For people to go in and make comments. There's a place for people to provide feedback.
Yes.
And then we can look at all that feedback. So I just want to remind everybody that.
And then on second reading, we respond to the feedback. Sure.
Mr. Alper? Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion, please, for second reading of the following board policy, data privacy and security, 6142.11.
Do you hear your motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. The data privacy and security policy was worked on by several staff and administration in, as it relates to both data security for the entire district and student body as well. We also worked on it, my colleague and I, Mr. Alper, in our role as committee members for the future-ready certification process that we're going through with Edison Central Six. Anyone have any questions?
Additional comment? At the point where we do our security audit, which will be both physical security and cybersecurity, we will get feedback from whomever we've hired to consult at that time as to whether or not we need to revise related policies.
Absolutely. Any further comments? Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Mordecai?
You're welcome.
I need a motion now to move Section A for Personnel.
I'll move.
A second, have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion from the Board on Personnel, Section A? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Retirement, we should mention.
Go ahead.
Carol Kletch, just want to thank her for 26 years now, and wish her well in retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. I need a motion to move Section B, Curriculum and Instruction.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. I need a motion to move Section C for Finance.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Robertson, do you want to speak now?
Yes. First, I want to apologize for not answering Mr. Geltz's question earlier. In regard to Mr. Calavano's contract, a couple of things. One, there is an ongoing investigation, but there has not been any charges filed or anything alleging embezzlement. If, as with any employee, you know, something were to come forth, we will address that personnel matter at that time, and that would be confidential. But thank you for your question, and thank you for your activism.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion from the Board?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Mordecai, go ahead.
Mr. Rutske, for Essex County Vocational and Technical Schools, now that a new vocational school is opening up, the Donald Payne School, I would like to make sure that we are very aggressive in securing more spots for our students at the high school who want to be accepted to the Vultech.
Absolutely, we have, we were last year, and it's something that the county superintendent is very well aware of, and he knows that we have a phenomenal program here, but some of our kids can even do better in other places, so that's why we're definitely doing that.
Yes, every time I see him, I make sure I ask him. Okay, and the Work Readiness and Training Program of the Work Readiness Academy on page 10, in the bottom of item two, I just want to confirm, are these for general ed and special ed students, or for all students?
Are you talking about number two on 10?
Union County, yes.
The Work Readiness Training Program?
Yes.
That this is specific for our special needs students who have the ability to do the work readiness?
Okay.
This one in particular?
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Ms. Mordecai?
No, thank you.
Mr. Alper, anything?
No.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, anything?
No.
Mr. Robertson?
No, thank you.
I just have two comments real quick. On items 14 and 15, the Confucius Grant and the grant from the Italian-American Committee on Education, just want to publicly thank both those entities. The Confucius Grant has been given to West Orange for a few years now, and I think the Italian-American Committee on Education, this is our second or third year of receiving that, so I want to thank both those entities for that as well. Any other further?
Oh, and they should know that one of their grant beneficiaries, our Harvard student, is currently doing a semester abroad in Italy and using his Italian actively.
Also, as Mordecai just pointed out, we have donations on item number five. We have donations to the Kelly School, Edison, Washington, and the West Orange High School Virtual Enterprise Course. So we want to thank those people and schools and PTAs who have donated. Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. I need a motion to move Section D on the reports.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes. Next on the agenda, reports from the Board members and President. Mr. Alper, anything?
Um, no, I do not have a question.
Okay. Mrs. Mordecai?
I just want to say that after many years of advocacy, we were informed this week that we will be receiving additional funds from the State, so it's quite welcome. We've been fighting for years to get a couple more dollars, you know, and last week, we were advised that it's going to be about 3.5 million, of course, until we actually receive it and the Board has a discussion about what happens next. I guess the President will speak to that at some point. But I'm just grateful for everybody who's taken the trip to Trenton to speak to legislators or made appointments to go to our local representative's office to advocate for funds for our district. West Orange has changed over the years, but nationally, the economy is very different, and we want to make sure that our students get the best educational opportunity and resources that's available, but everything comes at a cost, so it's always welcome to receive more funding. And thank you to my colleague, Mr. Alper, who has also attended a couple funding events with me and was instrumental in reaching out to the Fair Funding Action Committee. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mordecai? Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Go ahead.
Mr. Robertson?
Couple of things. One, just want to praise the Summer Enrichment Program, which every year seems to get better and better, and I know my daughter and many of her friends are having a wonderful time with everything from the arts and theater portions of it to the music, of course, which it's known for, dance, the science portion, and it's really quite an incredible program. On another note, there was an issue that was raised that we never addressed, and I was looking into it personally, too, because it also had impacted my daughter, and that was, several people brought forth that the honors program criteria were not implemented in the way that they were, in fact, promised and approved. The teacher's rating scale points were supposed to be assessed regardless of whether or not a student scored a certain amount on the test, and that didn't happen. In fact, the points were left off unless a student scored a certain amount on a test. And why was it important that the rating scales still appear? It's important because, one, the work that a child does every day in class is demonstrated in grades and demonstrated in the teacher's overall assessment, is the most important work that the child does, and the work that is most indicative of that child's capability and potential, and not a one-day test. So if we were to see in the teacher's rating scale, along with the grades, that the child had excelled, had excelled and yet didn't do well on a test, that would be an indication that the test was not an accurate barometer of the child's performance or capability, and that we should be taking a second look at that child's participating in honors. This is going to be corrected, and I apologize for anybody who, whose child did not benefit because this was improperly implemented, and we're looking into it, and I guarantee you it's going to be corrected. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you. I just want to echo Ms. Mordecai's sentiments about the fair funding formula. You know, back in June, the Board approved me to write a letter to Senator President Sweeney and ask for his support in changing the fair funding formula, which he did support, he did acknowledge, and, you know, with the help of parents and the community, it was changed. We are getting now an additional 3.5 million. But I just want to read into the records, some of the other towns in our area, some of the money that they are getting, and how West Orange is actually being short-changed. Belleville is getting 28 million, Bloomfield, 24 million, East Orange, 176 million, Irvinton, 117 million, Newark, 787 million, City of Orange, 78 million. So as you see, West Orange is getting 12 million, we are certainly lagging behind. Hopefully, next year, the fair funding formula is a little more balanced, and that, you know, in my opinion, this is probably going to be the single most thing that impacts West Orange school business, if we get a fair funding of that over the next, you know, two or three years with Governor Murphy and the New Jersey Assembly.
Governor Murphy has promised to phase in the funding formula over the next few years, but who knows if that will happen.
Right. It's every Say, I think it's supposed to be a seven-year phase in. We're supposed to be, by formula, getting around just under 27 million, but we've been getting around eight and a half, so it's half, so it's, we're getting there, but it's a slow process.
Just one other thing. I just want to thank, there's a lot of people in the audience right now, and I want to congratulate Maketa, our current assistant principal, Gregory. Maketa, are you here? Can you just stand up for a minute? And for all the members that are here, there's a lot of people, a lot of parents, a lot of teachers, and a lot of administrators, I really thank you. It was a long process, grueling process. Those that are here that were on there, just stand up for a minute, please. Please stand for those that are, that are a part of it. Thank you very much for your service and helping this. We had three really intense rounds. The second round was about seventeen to eighteen people, the third round being more on there, again, with Gregory parents, Gregory teachers, and administrators. So Maketa, we're all here to support you and help you. Congratulations. I'm really, really happy you're in that position. And Ms. Thompson, where's Ms. Thompson? Ms. Thompson, you've done terrific work over there. We're going to miss you. Thank you very much for helping Maketa get ready for the job.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rutske. Next on the agenda is petitions and comments from the citizens on any subject matter. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Mr. Calvano will work the clock.
Good evening. I'm Bill Sullivan, thirteen Oak Ridge Road. I was, I'm so glad I don't have to think about, come up and talk about middle school honors anymore, thank goodness. I also want to say that I'm from the town right next to Chesterfield Township, which became the poster child of the school funding formula, and very grateful that they're starting to create equity again in school funding. That's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about the bubble, the indoor practice facility, and of course, we all know that West Orange soccer program is incredible, has been incredible for a long time, and the lacrosse program is growing, and my son plays, and other parents are here tonight whose sons play. We have great coaches at the high school level, Coach Torian and Coach Metzakis, who doesn't have enough to do being the football coach, so he's also the JV lacrosse coach. We have a rec department youth program that is very strong. You now have guys, including the sons of those of us that are here tonight who were freshmen, going to be sophomores, who began in that youth program five and six years ago, and so now you have kids at the high school who have five and six years under their belt before they get to the high school, which is what we never had before. We have twelve of them playing this week at a camp in Verona, twelve kids from the high school team committed to be there this week at a camp in Verona. We're now adding a women's team. Great job, congratulations. There are so many people excited that you added women's lacrosse to, girls lacrosse to our program. So, we need a practice facility for inclement weather and in the winter. Of course, the bubble here collapsed in the storm. I don't know, I assume you got an insurance payout on that. I'd be interested in knowing if you did and how much you got for that. It seems to me now's the time to take advantage of an opportunity. I frankly never understood why the bubble at the high school was used for a weight room and a locker room. It didn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense to me. I also just want to mention that Mount Olive, our guys played in Mount Olive, not Center Court, which some of you may know, which is a privately run facility in Mount Olive, but Mount Olive High School has now built its own bubble in the back that's big enough to have two full-size fields underneath the bubble, and our, and our guys played there this winter. It cost a few million dollars to do. It was on an existing turf field. We, I don't have any documents on any of this. All I know is what we talked to the guys at Mount Olive about. They said that they're immediately renting that out to leagues, and they expect to get their investment back in seven to eight years. So it's, it's a good investment. Also, I happen to be the attorney for the South Orange Planning Board, and Orange Lawn came in and got approval to cover their clay courts in the winter. Now, they just, we just approved it last month. So I spoke to those guys, and they said they've submitted a proposal to the West Orange District, but haven't heard anything. So that's another outfit that you probably should talk to about this. Now, ideally...
Mr. Sullivan, time's up.
Really?
If you can wrap it up real quick.
I'm sorry, okay. Ideally, I think we should look at expanding the footprint either where it is or maybe over on the field on Conforty. That's a significant expense of dollars, but it ought to be at least thought about. But in the, in the absence of making that kind of commitment, what I would suggest is that if you're going to put the bubble back where it is, if you can make it any bigger, fine. If you can just make it, square it up, the goal, the goal of it would be, whatever you're going to put in there, just get enough space so we can have about twenty yards in there width so that we can have practices in there. You don't have that full-size field, but just enough so the guys can practice.
Mr. Sullivan, time, we're going to, I'm going to have, we have a full report for you to give, and some of the things you're talking about.
Great.
We're exactly working towards it.
We just want to, we want to make sure that you're aware that we're out there. We want to, hopefully can provide you some input. If we can be of any help in looking at, in tracking it down, we'd really like to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Orin Levin, five Corwell Circle. Couple of things I want to point out. First of all, thank you to Mr. Moore and the district for helping work on Eagle Scout project, actually right out here outside of the building. Michael McCollum had a great group from Troop Six, and the work outside looks phenomenal. So thank you very much to the district for helping him with his Eagle project. Second, I want to thank you guys for hosting the Engineering Exploration Camp this summer. My kids have enjoyed their first week thoroughly. They came home bouncing today, looking forward to the second week. I'd ask that, assuming that we host the Exploration, Engineering Exploration Camp again next summer, can we look into the possibility of allowing the kids from the Engineering Exploration to use some of the aftercare program at the enrichment camp? The Engineering Exploration ends at two thirty. I know the, the enrichment program here runs longer. That would be a great benefit for parents. Finally, with the data security, data privacy and security policy, I know I've mentioned before, I've been upset watching my kids use their school ID as passwords. I think this is a great time to revisit that, and also think about how some of the online systems that they're using fall into this. Looking at the policy, it says that student data is considered confidential. They're using the online fit testing, the online fit tracking, which asks for birthday, name, obviously you know the zip code. Birthdate, name, I say, birthdate, gender, and zip code can uniquely identify eighty-plus percent of people in the United States. Our kids are being asked to submit their papers to online checking systems for, for copying and plagiarism. Again, I just ask that all these online activities that the students are using be reviewed and make sure that the data is being handled properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, Barbara Braunstein, fifteen Blackburn. I'm here just to bring up the discussion on possibly having online classes be accepted at West Orange High School. The school I teach in, Carlstadt East Rutherford District, has done it for many years. I saw in the paper that Verona just became a participating district, and Emerson in VHS, it's been around for twenty-two years, accredited, accepted in New Jersey, Middle States accredited, Advanced Ed accredited, and there's others, you know, they estimate, and I saw an article from 2011 that over a hundred thousand students participate, forty schools even back in 2009 were part of online consortiums. And with my particular students, they look at their trajectory, they just finished their freshman year, and one of them will have to either leave art or music, which they're both in an advanced track for that, because she's going towards a science career, and she will not be able to be in both art, music, and AP Sciences. It just won't fit. So it's not that she's going to take less credits in the school. She wants to take additional credits at our expense and have them accepted by accredited programs. So this is also why my district does it. They have two hundred extra classes with, you know, we're a participating school with VHS, and with two hundred additional classes that they can take, with one teacher teaching one class, they get twenty-five slots for every teacher. So that's why schools maybe not as big as West Orange have come on board, because, you know, if there's only seven hundred students in the school, you could have two hundred extra classes for them to take that we would never be able to offer, and it would be a very enriching experience for the more motivated students. And I happen to have a couple of them in my house, and we're looking at what you're going to have to choose from and what you're going to have to give up, and it's not that they don't want to take classes. It's like, there are so many things I want to take that are advanced, but I can't take the career in college readiness, five credits, and the financial literacy, and I did freshman seminar already, and I did this. It just won't fit. Won't they let me take it online from an accredited institution? And I think it's time for West Orange to come on board, along with so many other districts that are frankly rated better than us on a school report card. So it's, you know, I, I was having trouble getting districts to tell, you know, online to tell me who does and doesn't, but I know of at least four neighboring districts, Verona, Carlstadt, Rockaway Demville, Emerson, you know, and that's just with VHS, one place that I just happen to have been a teacher in, so I know how rigorous it is. So I just wanted to put it out there because I'm going to be arguing for that for my student, and I know of a few other students that are in the same place, and I really don't want Rose to leave Chamber Orchestra or, you know, and that, that kind of thing. My, one of mine already had to drop orchestra to make up a math, double up in math. So, um...
Okay.
Think about it, and I'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
Barry Goutsal, eleven eighteen, old Indian. We came here tonight, wanted to make a presentation. We were denied by the board. We were going to come here and present our findings on our own investigation of Superintendent Rutske, but we were asked by you guys, the board, not to do this, and we're not going to do it, not out of respect for you guys, except for you, Ronny, you've always been loyal to me, but everybody else, you've spent the time disparaging, trying to discredit, trying to make us look like we're just angry fools. But we have our findings here. I'll gladly drop them off on your desk. We also have a wonderful appointment with Jeff Chisaya and Ron Israel, so we can show him our findings. And also, if anybody else wants it, you can come get it or message me and I'll email them to you. But I just want to let you know that we got it all through legal operable facts, and it's IOP. Would you guys like a copy?
Yes, if you can.
Sure.
Sure. Anyone further?
Jacqueline Goldfossing, twenty-five Morris Road. I have a situation, and a few of you have emailed regarding this. It's going to take more than three minutes, and I would love to have, to speak to, with a group of you on a different setting, if you don't mind, because this is very sensitive, and I really need to get this resolved.
Okay. We're here afterwards, we could certainly spend time.
Okay. I emailed you, Ron, and I, and Mr. Rutske and Alper, I emailed you regarding this, and I really need to get this resolved because it's very important to me.
Thank you.
Michaela Bennett, thirty-five, old Indian road. I just have one question of the board. I want to ask you if it's true that the board has approved expenditures to afford Superintendent Rutske a civil attorney and a criminal attorney out of taxpayer dollars. I know that the contract, his contract stipulates for that, and I've heard that he's retained counsel civilly because we raised the issues of the discrepancies in his resume, and then criminally because of the Essex County Prosecutor's investigation, and so I'd like to know whether or not it's true that he's retained counsel and if you're affording him that counsel out of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Ron, sister sit, Mitchell Street. I have a question in regards of the physical restraining seclusion. I know it's for first reading. In page numbers two, in the second, in the third part appears about staff being trained. I would like to know about the ratio of the staff that are going to be trained and what would be the criteria to be used to choose those staff. In the same page, in part C, indicate about the care physician have authorized the use of seclusion techniques given a prior reading consent. I would like to know how the prior reading consent is going to be, take place, if you're going to be requesting them, and how you're going to make the inventory of those possible students who may need, be in need, or you've been used of these techniques. Then in number D, number one, seclusion is only used in emergency. How did you define emergency? And will parents of those students will be notified of a chance to this to be occurred? I understand it is going to be notified to the parents at the moment that they happen, and they have a special time to be, to do so. But my question is, how would you know that those parents are in need to be informed and they are part of the inventory? The last piece is indicating, it doesn't say anything about any law, law, sorry, which indicates that from K to two, kids cannot be in seclusion or restraint. There is no information in that regards, but on the contrary, the Director of Special Services in conjunction with Rutske, we will make a procedure and guides and policy in that regards. I want to make sure that one time at least, this procedure is being taken by the book, just that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ron? Mr. Ron? If you don't mind, could you please email me your comments so I can also share them with Mr. Rutske and the Director of Special Services?
Adam Kramer, twenty Moran Road. I'm going to start with a question and have a few just general comments. My first question is, is it was the intent of the legislature to give us tax relief, and is the three point eight million extra going to be used for that purpose? And I also offer a warning. We haven't gotten much state aid in years, and in many reasons. It's because sales tax revenue, income tax revenue for the state hasn't been where it should be, so the state didn't have it to give. If the economy cools down in the future, we could be in the same boat. So caution on thinking you're going to have state aid and start on a spending spree. The main thing I want to talk about is looking around at what's going on in the school when you read the press, when you follow what's going on. There are some serious issues of trust. There's large segments of the community that bluntly don't trust the schools to spend their money, educate their kids, and do what they're supposed to do. And I'm not going to, you know, go into names or specifics, but I think what really is the problem behind this is there's really not a culture of accountability with this school system where it should be. Year after year, test scores aren't where they are supposed to. Year after year, tax expenditures go up. We now have questions of whether funds are being spent appropriately wisely or perhaps even misappropriated. Nobody seems to own these problems. Nobody seems to be saying, I'm responsible for test scores, I'm responsible to make sure that these children get educated. Nobody seems to be standing up and saying, I'm responsible for making sure that your hard-earned tax dollars are spent wisely every day. Nobody seems to be on top of things and says when things go wrong, people are going to be held accountable. And until we have that culture of accountability, it doesn't matter who's up here on the dais, it doesn't matter who's on the school board, who's the superintendent, who's the school board administrator, you're not going to have that trust. And if you don't have that trust between the people and the schools, this community is in big trouble.
Thank you.
Good evening. Cindy Matu...
Cindy Matu Brown, 24 Corwell Circle. Thank you, Adam, for what you just said. I have to second what he said. I did not come up here to state that, but it's very true. The culture of the lack of accountability is hurting everyone in this town, so I'm really hopeful that with what's happening with the investigation of the superintendent, and your responsiveness to the public, your accountability and transparency is forthcoming. I came to ask, just as a follow-up, I know Mr. Mendez is not here, but with respect to the ESL program, I know it was tabled the last time. I understand there's training happening in August, so I would like to know, are we rolling that program out without the board having approved the resolution, or what is going on with the ESL program? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Alan Grossman, 4 North Cowing Place. I just wanted to clarify two things. The data privacy and security thing, I believe passed unanimously, but somebody had mentioned there might be still things to be considered in it, to be revised. I just wanted to see if that was the case or not, and if I heard that right. The other thing with the fair funding, I've heard a lot of different figures thrown around, 3.5 million, 3.8 million, 8.5 million. I just wanted to make clear what we're getting back, also why, I had heard it was much larger numbers early on that we were getting back. How this, if you can briefly tell us how this was all decided, and why other towns did far better than we did on that, on that act?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Susan McAdie, 2 Mountain Way. I wanted to address the issue of people not being very trusting right now, and the first thing I want to say is, I feel like there really are a handful of people who, for whatever reason, have had their panties in a bunch, and that's fine. But the report you got about the, about the resume and stuff, I haven't seen it, but I have seen that those same people have been doing such in-depth investigation, like, they found articles about Mr. Rutzke hurting his hand when he was nine years old. I don't think we, as a community, need to know that much information, you know, about our superintendent, quite frankly. I know, I have volunteered with the PTA for many, many years. I have been in the classrooms, I've been in the school. The people that I've met have been amazing. I've only had a lot of one-on-one interactions with Mr. Rutzke this past year, and I must say that at each and every instant, he has been very professional. He has been able to focus people without letting personal opinions get in the way. He has been very efficient and has helped all the processes that I've been in, when I've talked to people who are responsible about looking into things like ESL, or the math program, or all these things. Overwhelmingly, all those people, all they want to do is make sure our kids are, get the best results that they can. Not all of this is visible to people who are not in the schools every day. Not all of this is visible if you can't volunteer and, you know, go to committee meetings and do that kind of stuff. But it's there. Their hearts are there. They're trying to do the right things for everybody in our school system. And I think that that needs to be stated very strongly, that I feel like that's happening in our school system. We make mistakes. We have to address them professionally with the people, even though as parents, we get very upset about things. But you all are professionals, the teachers are professionals, and everybody's trying to just do the best for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further?
John Blanton, please don't start the clock, please, because I asked a question earlier, and you didn't answer your question, so in fairness, if you guys can answer my question, because I may have a comment after my question, so if you could tell me why those two items were taken off the agenda. I thought I had missed something in regards to you guys not responding to me. So if I could stand here and hear your response at this point, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Good. Mr. Robinson, if you want.
One of them I addressed, that was the merit goals Mr. Rutzke elected to take them off the agenda. The board goals, I don't know if you want to answer that one?
Well, I spoke on the board, because I don't know if John, if you, if you, Mr. Blanton, you're hurt.
I didn't hear, you know, if you did, I apologize.
Okay. The board itself removed those goals, and we wanted to fine-tune them and have them on for the next meeting.
Yeah. We had done a workshop, and we needed like part two of that. We did the initial brainstorming, but we needed more time to really fine-tune and have that, have a follow-up workshop.
Okay. Thank you.
And we apologize, sort of told you. I just written that down, just like.
Apology, it stepped within the spirit, it was given. Some questions. The first thing is, in response to what you guys just told me, and I think that you guys need to provide an enormous sum of clarity to our community. I have an opportunity to interact with a lot of people, both that live in our district, people that are considering moving here to our district, educators that are contemplating coming here to work in our district when positions are open. And we really need, and I've said this over and over and over again, we need to come together as professionals, as parents, in this community. And, you know, I have my disagreements. I don't agree with everything that Mr. Ruske has done in our district, but at the end of the day, you guys need to be transparent, because the goals and objective of the district is set by you guys for the superintendent to follow. So if there's something wrong with the superintendent, you guys need to be speaking to that, because any superintendent in the state of New Jersey follows the goals and objectives that have been placed by the superintendent when he or she comes in the district. So I wanted to say that. The second thing is, I did not know that our meetings go beyond West Orange, and we're like the laughing stock. I mean, and with the national tone of what's happening in this country, we have become a part of that. And, you know, someone came up, and I just want to echo her sentiments. I don't care what Jeff Ruske did 27 years ago, if it doesn't relate to his job. I don't care if he hurt his hand. You know, we have people that have served in our town that, you know, there was something about a DWI that I was watching a couple of weeks ago. You know, if he had a DWI 27 years ago, if some of you go back and check with some of these people that have saying this stuff 27 years ago, and you won't have to go back that far, you'll find some stuff. And so we need to come together. You know, there's an R and B song that was made a few years ago, that was, if you're living in a glass house, don't throw no stones. And there's a gospel song, old-school gospel song that says, "Sweep around your own front door before you sweep around mine." The last thing is a question. We're, I guess, in the process of constructing a new facility. Someone spoke about the bubble as well. I think we need to consider doing something like Montclair High School and other schools have done. We've spent an enormous sum of money over the last few years continuing to put that bubble up to collapse. And so we need to look at an alternative mechanism. You know, insanity says doing the same thing over and over again and expecting to get different results. We look, now look at, we need to look at another alternative. And I also need to know, the last question, who is the contractor? I guess that would be, who's the contractor that's going to be doing our football field and our track? And when will they begin the work at the facility? And if there's any things that are found that may be missing as we do this new complex, because we have some wonderful facilities? Is there anything in place that, if there's something that may be missing that we could put a change order in effect to add, or maybe take away and make revisions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further? See you now, and close that section of the agenda. Mr. Rutzke? Yes? You know, Mr. Rutzke, and Mr. Calavano, if we could start with a quick overview of the bubble?
Sure.
That seems to be something that we spoke about, and the community is...
Begin with the, where we are as of today?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Bit opening of the...
Actually, the bid opening is scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 PM. It was originally scheduled for last week. There were some questions from various vendors that our architect had to get back, and answered all those questions, so we're hopeful that we will have some responses for tomorrow's bid opening at 1:00 PM.
Okay. I know the board is aware of this, but we had our students in the advanced engineering class take some time and design what they believe would be an effective indoor bubble. And we gave them some parameters, like locker rooms, and the size, and weight room, and other things that the board would be interested in considering for what the inside of the bubble looked like. They did a phenomenal job. We brought them into, to the board meeting, last board meeting, to just explain what their thoughts were. They were very excited about it, and these are, again, our most advanced kids, so they had some presentations. And then from that point, we were going to take the three different presentations, mold them into one, work with our architect, and begin the design of the inside of the bubble. The bubble, as Mr. Calavano indicated, will, the bid openings are tomorrow. We are a little behind with the bubble. We were hoping to have this process moving along, as we know, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, it is a facility that's used by a lot of the athletes, our phys ed classes, and actually some of, some of the folks that are part of the recreation department. So we're excited to get it moving. We're hoping this weather continues, because it will help once we have the final bids done, and we have the inside specs laid out. We have to work with the architect. There's a couple of things we have to work on, and actually, we'll begin that tomorrow, and then moving forward. So by the end of the week, we're hoping that we can have the board make some decisions and move the process along on the inside of what it's gonna look like. One of the nice parts of the outside, if you've ever been inside the bubble, you know the old bubble, we lost a lot of room in the corners of the bubble. The design of it did not allow for the structure to go straight up. It kind of angled from the corner straight out, and we lost a lot of space within the bubble. This new bubble, we will gain all of that space back, and the section of the roof will go up 10 feet, and then it will start to angle, which will make the bubble. So we will gain all of that space back, and it is tremendous amount of space. We've spoken to a lot of our coaches. We've gotten feedback from them about what they would like to see and how it will be done, because it really is a facility that's used by a lot of the coaches and a lot of our phys ed teachers. So, Mr. Charles, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, some of the things that the public I just talked about, we have actually talked, we talked about a section of asphalt turf for a practice field. We looked, we actually, I went back to Mount Olive, and I seen their actual facility. Actually, theirs is temporary, they take theirs down and up depending, which is something that we looked at as well. The extra room, and we're looking to create some more, some room for the track team to practice in there, create maybe a three or four lane workout facility for them. Besides the weight room, we're looking at adding the locker rooms for the girls. Right now, there's very few locker rooms and a very small bathroom that's in there. We're gonna have equal size, pretty much, for the girls and for the boys. We looked at adding some training rooms. Some of the designs from the children came with a second floor with a conference room and a video room, so we're trying to balance that on a cost relationship. So we're waiting for the bids to come in tomorrow, and we open them up, and then we're gonna see exactly what the architect says as far as the cost analysis. We looked at even expanding, you know, maybe 20 feet on the west side and another like 20 feet on the north side, but then we ran into some, we had to put some vent, some piping, some drainage in, and we had to break up the current floor that's there now, which was, became too expensive of a project. But two things that bubbles nowadays, that, the bubble that we have now is about 14 years old, and the lifespan of that was only eight years old. So we're way beyond the life expectancy. This bubble nowadays have 18 to 20-year guarantees. They're built with LED lighting on the inside. It's really, it's a phenomenal, like, quantum leap in the way the bubble was compared to now. You know, I believe our facilities here are second to none, and, you know, I think that this is only gonna add for the winter sports and for the early spring sports, to get some practice time in, to get some workout time in, and, you know, provide our kids a better environment to work in.
Also, just want to know, too, that Mr. Blanton mentioned about collapsing all the time. We looked at the, as part of this, we're looking at what's the wind rating for the structure? How does it disperse snow more effectively and efficiently, so we're not having these annual collapses? So these were all part of the, looking at much better designs, but also looking at, and this kind of goes to some of the points I've heard, too, about accountability on tax dollars and that sort of thing. We had to balance, trying to develop a better structure with how much we can actually afford and be responsible with from a spending standpoint. And Mr. Sullivan, not only does your idea of the two football fields, you know, a wide structure sound fantastic, frankly, the soccer folks for Futsal would be competing with you to try to get in there. It's just a matter of affordability. Perhaps, as we look at the strategic plan, and we're looking at a longer-term view, we can look at how to budget for that. Maybe there are my favorite old word, grants available, and other things. We know that there'll be payback over time, but often for an investment like that, you know, we'd have to look at bonding and other things, and all these things do have impact on taxpayers. We, too, are ecstatic about how well our lacrosse team is doing, and that we now have a girls' lacrosse team, too. This is exciting stuff, and this will be a new area where we'll be competitive. But it comes down to balancing, building a better structure and cost. And in terms of, you asked about, well, why the weight rooms and all these things? Well, the truth is that lacrosse athletes as well, we have to think about the conditioning. And strength, conditioning for strength, as well as flexibility and all that, is part of what the structure can help to provide, and all the athletes can benefit from that. Frankly, I wish some of the teams, and I won't mention them, would use them a little bit more, or get in there. But, you know, we just don't have the ability to fund something that's gonna be a full indoor practice field right now. But it's something we definitely should look at towards the future.
Mr. Sullivan, two other pieces to the bubble. The biggest problem with the bubble is the age. It was definitely out of warranty, but the HVA system was the problem, and that's why it was collapsing. It wasn't so much the issue of the repairs were able to be done. They kept saying it's, you know, gonna become unreparable, but that wasn't the problem. It was the HVAC could not keep up and keep it inflated properly. So when there was weight and there was snow around the outside, we would clear all that out. We just couldn't keep up with it, and that eventually is what happened. We looked into the cost of just replacing the shell and the HVAC, and it was basically the same amount of doing a brand-new with the new structure, with new walls, all those kinds of things. So it didn't make sense to just put a new shell on HVAC when there's other things that we knew that we needed to improve. And the weight room itself, we, this building is so tight, there's literally no place in this building that we could put the weight room. And that's been one of the benefits of the bubble, is the weight room's been in there, and a lot of the phys ed classes use that as well in different ways, cardiovascular and whatever it might be. Mr. Levin, I would be happy to talk to you...
I could just add one more thing on the bubble. We also looked at making sure that the bubble is ADA compliant, so that we're inclusive for our students who may have physical challenges. So that's another part of that we're looking at.
Yep. Mr. Levin, I'd be happy to talk to you about the data privacy, if we can have that conversation tomorrow, the next day, and get your feedback on that. Mr. Bernstein, we are currently using some online classes, where's Mr. Bernstein? But we have not expanded it yet. We've begun, we're using it sporadically for certain situations, and we've had great success doing it. And I certainly will talk to you, look into it. We've had that conversation, but we certainly can have further discussion. I'd be glad to talk to you about it. Mr. Ron, as I indicated with all the policies, if you would just go in and put your comments in about the restraint training, just please put them in there, because then we have them, then we can reflect on them and make changes as we need to. So if you would do that, that would be greatly appreciated. Mr. Kramer, the board is looking at the tax relief based on the additional state aid. There'll be further conversation with the board to determine the best way that they can utilize that money. The ESL program for this current year, we're in 1819, will stay the same as last year. There'll be a lot of training that takes place, and then we will bring another proposal to the board in the middle of next year. Mrs. McAdie, thank you for the comments, and especially the committees. I know you're on just about everything that you can over at Gregory. I know you've done a lot of work over there. Greatly appreciated. Obviously, you were part of the hiring of Makeda, and that was greatly appreciated as well. It's a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of sitting, listening to answers, so thank you for doing that. That's all I have.
Okay. Any comments?
Any comments from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Couple of things. Mr. Levin and Mr. Grossman, actually a couple that crossed over. As part of our security audit, it's going to be a cybersecurity audit as well. You're right, there are gaps, there are major concerns, so we need to bring in the proper expertise. And you could join us too, Mr., because since you're an audible guy. But we need to bring in the proper expertise to really examine how to address this better. Any recommendations that you have for solves, please let us know. And so that also answers part of Mr. Grossman's question. So yeah, the data and privacy policy, security policy could be altered after we bring in a cyber expert. We've done a lot in terms of security internally, but we still need that expertise. And I got to tell you, this is, school districts around the country going through this. When we did the workshop, went to the New Jersey NJ SBA workshop, the room was packed for cybersecurity, and there were more questions than that could be answered during that time period. So something everybody's looking at, and we need to, we definitely want to do better in it. Going to, hold on a second. Mrs. Doron, again, thank you so much for bringing your critical insights and your questions and your concerns. Please do email them to Mrs. Mordecai and myself, and if there are any suggestions that you have, please let us know. We would like to incorporate them. Including the public in the review of policies is key to developing good policies, and we want to do better in that respect. So we'll keep working at that. Let's see here. Oh, okay. Mr. Getzel, Barry, couple of things that, first, I'm going to speak on behalf of the board, then I have something personal I need to share. As soon as you brought the information to us back in March, and we said this in open public meeting, and I'd swear to this on note, we immediately began to investigate it using internal resources. And we told you that then, and we meant it. It wasn't BSing, okay? Then, as you know, we engaged a third party. We engaged a third-party special counsel. And we engaged that third-party special counsel for a couple of reasons. One, we needed, we wanted to ensure that there is going to be no conflict in how people viewed it as well as in how we execute it. Number two, and this is, you know, highest level person, this is somebody who had been a former AG, okay? Is one of the member of the firm. The firm has a lot of top folks. We needed to ensure that there was going to be impartiality, transparency, absolutely no conflict, and that it'd be very professionally done. And we had to do due diligence. So when somebody from the public brings us what they, documentation, information, or anything that they feel has a legal, that's going to have a legal or personnel impact, we are legally bound, as well as ethically bound, to go through, to do due diligence and to go through a due process. We have to do the proper investigation and to verify, validate, and further uncover whatever information is related to it in that matter. That's our duty. In terms of not allowing you to do a presentation before the board, I'm not aware, and maybe it happened before I ever got on the board, in the, in our practice, we've always had, come to the mic, you can present for three minutes on agenda items at the beginning and on anything that you wish to present to at the end. We've not, the only time that parents have ever done a presentation to the board was when they were involved as part of a committee. And those were parents, whatever it was, when we did the HAP or Gifted and Talented Committee, one of the parents came to the mic and presented portions of that, and there have been other instances as well. But, so it wasn't, it wasn't personal, it wasn't meant to say, no, you can't do this, this is a terrible thing. No, we respect your desire to bring that information, we respect your desire to share it, and we respect the information that you bring. And we would, I've never, and not to my knowledge, has anybody in the board done anything to disparage what you bring. We respect it. You're a citizen, you've come forth with passion, with a sense of duty yourself to bring the information to us, and we've respected it. We would not do anything to discredit you. It would be, that would be unethical and unprofessional and grossly inappropriate. And I've got it now on a personal note. Whether it was sending me an email as a board member or sending me a text message as somebody who's known you for years, no matter what you said in that message, and some of the things were rather harsh in terms of the language even, I've never, well, like, you know, to paraphrase, urinating on my leg, saying I was urinating on your leg. I, as a person, as one man to another, and as somebody who respects you in the community, I made sure when I responded to you that I responded respectfully even then. And the way I responded was to say, I understand how you feel, I understand you're upset, I understand you feel that this needs to move more quickly. We're doing what we can according to, in doing our due diligence to investigate. And after you brought information, other people brought information that was all related to the same thing, so we had to go through the process. It was never meant to disrespect you, I would never disrespect you, nor would anybody on our board. It's unprofessional and unethical. And that's for Mrs. Bennett, Mr. Volsho, anybody who's brought the information. Thank you for doing what you're doing, thank you for taking the time and the effort and the passion and the caring to bring forth what you do. We welcome it, and you are now going to be meeting with that special counsel. We ask that that happens, so that your information, your testimony, and your efforts are given the respect and the due diligence, and part of our due diligence exercises that they deserve, that you deserve, okay? We would never do anything less. And, you know, once again, total respect. I think you asked about, okay. We do have to abide by both contract and policy, and yes, Mrs. Bennett, as you've already read, I mean, you're an attorney, and you know that we had to abide by that, and so, and I can't comment further because it's a personnel matter, but yes, for our funding for an attorney, yes, that's part of, that was part of a contract that you have possession of. Let me see, where you asked about, I'm sorry, my handwriting's terrible and sometimes I have trouble reading it. Okay, I'll come back to that, I apologize. I talked about Mr. Ron. Mr. Kramer, you're right. Accountability is something that we are working very hard to address internally, and that's also going to come out, I believe you'll see, as we address things in our goals as a board. Responsibility towards the taxpayer, we consider a very high priority, and we are working to look at what, how the additional funding from the state, while it's miniscule compared to some other districts, are, we feel a responsibility towards the taxpayer. After we've addressed safety and security, because we got to make sure our kids are safe and secure, after we've addressed whatever we've promised or planned for student achievement, which is our number-one priority as a board, we have to make sure that we're being responsible to our taxpayers. So we're going to look at doing as much in terms of allocations for that as possible. We feel a responsibility to that, we feel a duty to that, and thank you for staying honest in that respect. Ms. Brown, I think that was answered. And we, Ms. Brown, we would never roll out a program, we will never, from this point, roll out a program that unless it has been voted, had been approved by roll call, I don't know who she is, but approved by a roll call, oh, there you are, roll call vote of the board. So no, as Mr. Rutske mentioned, that has been postponed. We're still getting more data and information from ESL parents, from Gen Ed parents, and we're going to continue to gather that data information, that feedback before we proceed. And then it would be presented again in your presence, in the public's presence, for you to once again bring the level of passion and the scrutiny that you should be bringing and that we need from you before it moves ahead, before we vote on it. Nothing will move ahead without the vote for approval. That's it, from me, thank you.
Just briefly on fair funding for Mr. Grossman and Mr. Kramer. I wouldn't say that the intent of the legislature was tax relief, I think that's a side effect. The legislature's real intent there was to solve a 10-year-old problem, which was that when the new funding formula went into effect in 2008, there was adjustment aid put in place for the districts that were going to be losing a lot of money, because their enrollment had declined from what it was during the old formula. And that adjustment aid was supposed to be phased out over the years, but it never was. So districts like West Orange have been suffering while other districts have been getting more what they needed back before 2008, even though they didn't have that many students any longer. So this is now a process that over supposedly seven years is going to shift that. And the idea is, the state has the funding formula that looks at each district's enrollment and the specific characteristics of those students, determines what the district's adequacy number is, how much the state thinks it should be paying towards education, and then it looks at the income in that town and figures out what the fair funding number is, what the town should be able to raise itself through taxes. And if the amount the town can fairly raise through taxes is less than adequacy, the state is supposed to make that difference up. In our case, we were getting 33% of the fair funding amount that we should have been getting, and that's now starting to increase. Obviously, other districts have been getting, you know, well over 100% of what they were getting, and that's the problem that's starting to be addressed. Mr. Grossman, I think the specific exact numbers, I don't think they're exactly final yet, but they're in process. I suspect that some, I hope that some of the numbers.
It's approximately 3.5 million, but it's not final.
Okay. I'm just hoping around that some of the numbers you were reading were the total numbers those districts were getting from the state and not the new money they were newly getting.
That is correct.
Okay.
And what I was reading from was the Department of Education's letter they put out this afternoon, and I'll share with you afterwards.
Gotcha.
I just want to add a comment on that, Mr. Grossman. The, some of the numbers that he was reading was from former Abbott districts, and they're funded entirely different from other school districts. So that's why the imbalance seems so outrageous.
Mr. Alper, anything further?
That's all I had.
Ms. Mordecai, anything further?
No.
Mr. Schwartzman?
No.
And I have nothing. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is the next board meeting, which will be held 8:00 P.M. right here at West Orange High School, August 6th, 2018. I need a motion now to move into executive session. No action will be taken. I need a motion to move.
I make a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive session.